Okay, call meeting's ordered. At this time, it's the stand for the invocation and the prayers.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, we just come before you this evening and pray for all of those that call Corinth home. And Father, we pray that you would fill us with your insight and your favor as this wonderful city begins and continues to grow. And Father, we ask for your hand in our lives and, of course, our emotional health in these times of intense world events. And Father, thank you for your presence in our city and for your son. And it's in his name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Okay. Thank you. Citizens' comments. Please leave me your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items right before them at this time. First person who might speak is Sandra and Bob. Is it Costin?
Knitson.
Yes. Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Sandra Knitson, 2803 Silver Meadow Lane.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Sandra Knitson, 2803 Silver Meadow Lane.
You've got three minutes.
I just wanted to say that I am, and my husband are against the expansion of Silver Meadow Lane. I have been there forty-nine years. It's a nice quiet neighborhood. We have a four-lane thoroughfare, a blockaway, and Church Drive, and it seems senseless to disturb the neighborhood.
Thank you. Betty A., is it Grease? Ice? Okay. She did, "I am against the expansion of Silver Meadow Drive." Sterling Sax?
No, Mayor, that's during the public hearing.
Okay.
That one may be...
Mr. Sax.
You want to do it during the public hearing or right after the public hearing? Yes, sir. Okay. We'll do it then. Okay? Okay? Thank you. At this time, I'd entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, a move that we approve?
Second?
Any per discussion? Got your vote.
Mike, you've had it slopped on.
Okay. Yay or nay?
Yay.
Thank you.
It's unanimous. Public hearing. Conduct a public hearing. At this time, Mr. (inaudible) is going to have to accuse himself. Public hearing. Conduct a public hearing to consider testimony and act on rezoning request by writing, writing your associates to amend the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Corinth, each being a part of the Unified Development Code of the city, some SF-2 single-family residential to SF-3 single-family residential on approximately fourteen point two acres, generally located east of Post Oak Drive, north of Terrace Oaks subdivision, and south of Providence subdivision. Case number ZMA twenty-three dash zero zero two dash SF-two to SF-three. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, our planning manager, Michelle Meisel, will introduce this item and answer any questions you have, and then we'll go into the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, council. By way of orientation, this property subject site is located just east of Post Oak. It is south of Church, Providence subdivision is to the north, Terrace Oaks to the south, and Windsor Ridge to the west. It's approximately fourteen point one four eight acres of predominantly undeveloped land. It's located approximately midway between Church and Lake Sharon Drive. This is a straight rezoning request. The property is generally located, again, east of Post Oak, and there are a few small homesteads, large lots, on the property. There are, is an existing large growth of trees and a small pond. The applicant is requesting a straight rezoning change from SF-two to SF-three. You can note here that the current zoning for the entire properties around the subject site, and I'm circling, is SF-two, and they are simply requesting to change this portion of their parcel, the anti-op church parcel, to SF-three, the next classification in the zoning ordinance. For your reference, the SF-two being changed to SF-four, we'll go through some of the differences in terms of the lot size. SF-two has a minimum lot size of fourteen thousand square feet, and they're requesting to go in just this portion to ten thousand square feet. You can see to the north, it's currently zoned SF-three, straight-based zoning district would be developed, this property would be developed probably in a similar fashion in the sense that there would be coming through a preliminary plat process. The property, the lots there have a minimum of ten thousand square feet, and the remainder tract around would, would stay SF-two, which would be the fourteen thousand square foot lot. Just to the east is PD fifty-five, and the portion that's adjacent to the area to be rezoned is, is set at ten thousand square feet. Just to the south is Terrace Oaks, well, excuse me, there's an existing SF-two that would remain, and then just south of that is the Terrace Oaks, PD thirty-nine, SF-four, and it has minimum lot size of seventy-eight hundred square feet. And again, the area west would remain SF-two. This is just a visual showing you the differences, the nuances between going from SF-two to SF-three in terms of the side yard setback. You're going from fifteen to seven, seven and a half, so it's about, it's a half, it's equal distance, equal measure. The corner lots have a fifteen, twenty-five foot, they're going to fifteen, and that's a ten-foot difference. In terms of lot area, however, it's a four thousand square foot difference. The minimum lot width at the building line is one hundred feet under the existing zoning, and it would go to eighty feet, so there's a twenty-foot difference. In terms of depth, one-ten to one hundred, and it's a ten-foot. And then the minimum floor area for the dwellings would be, rather than a minimum of two thousand square feet, would be permitted to go down to seventeen hundred or three hundred square foot difference. In terms of the future land use plan, this classification, this area falls under the classification of traditional neighborhood. In our, in our 2040 plan, there's, there is no described density identified in that classification, though it talks about character in terms of appropriate transitions to the surrounding neighborhoods. There are particular pedestrian connections that are required, are discussed in that classification to connect to adjoining neighborhoods, schools, and parks. And the proposed zoning change of SF-two to SF-three is in keeping with the classification. Here are a few neighborhood place type images for your reference. And just to reiterate, this is a straight map amendment, straight zoning change. We don't see many of these, but this is just changing the, the map at this time. Future development within a straight-based zoning district must comply with the UDC standards as they are currently adopted today. So what we have in the book, on the books right now, is what the developer will, will develop under. There's no concept plan required. The layout is determined at the time of preliminary plat stage, and that, as a reminder, is approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the plating and engineering plans are not subject to public hearing, and the engineering plans are reviewed and approved at the civil, at the time of civils administratively. Again, it's in compliance with the neighborhood place type, neighborhood. And we received, in terms of letters of support as of today, no letters of support and two letters of opposition from property owners of one property. Two letters were received for the same, the same property located within two hundred feet of the subject site. Staff is recommending approval as presented. And there's, the recommended motion, you have that on your staff report as well. The applicant is here and is available to answer any questions, and I'll go ahead and put the... You can put this, zip it up if you like.
Does this council have any questions for...
I just want to make sure, so this SF-three, that's, is that Providence? Is already part of that SF-three?
Yes.
Okay. So if this got approved, then the developer can't come back and say, oh, I'm, I'm, there's no PD in this anywhere. It's just going to be a straight zoning.
This is a straight-based zoning. So the developer would be required to, when they came in at time of preliminary plat, to show the lot layout. They would, they would meet the minimum requirements of the SF-two district, the fourteen thousand square foot lots. They would meet the, my mouse just went somewhere. They would meet the minimum square foot footage of ten thousand square feet for anything that's within this green box, as well as all of the other design standards established within the UDC in terms of park recreation, tree preservation. There's no negotiation in terms of tree preservation because it's not a PD. So whatever we have on the books, they will make their decision how that works for, for them.
So out of the fourteen acres, how much is SF-two and how much is SF-three?
Of the fourteen acres, the fourteen acres is just the subject area in green. So the remainder, I don't recall what the total area is. Mr. Remberg? Mr. Remberg can answer that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from council? Thank you. Does, Mr. Remberg want to...
Oh, I think they, IT, can you put the...
Yes.
Powerpoint back? So we have a, oh, you have one? Oh.
Is it waiting on me? Anyway, good evening.
Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
My name is Reginald Remberg. I live at forty-three sixteen Lower Lane, Flower Mountain, Texas, and I will be the potential developer of this property if approved. Thanks, Mayor and council, for giving me an opportunity to stand before you guys again to present this project again. We've been working on this since two thousand and twenty-one, and hopefully tonight, we have something that you guys will be proud of and that we can move forward with. A little bit about me, I'm a developer, been developing for like twenty-five years. I'm an industry player, active members of builder associations, Texas Association of Builders and National Association of Builders, so we're just not a fly-by-night company. We are a company that is involved in the overall building and development industry. I'm trying to get this thing to go to the next level. Can I not do that?
You can push the arrow.
I've come and said, "Push it." Not working.
I might have to... This is a key, um, key, yeah. Yeah, you're going to have to do this.
Okay. I can do that. You know, as I stated... I wonder, right, where you're going, wrong way? As I stated about myself, our plan clearly is to take this property, leave a portion of it to remain in SF-two, and the portion that she talked about, we're going to add request and change to SF-three on the remainder. We've been working on this since November of two thousand and twenty-one, and we're here today, October ninth, to hopefully get a positive results from the council. Project specifics? Same thing. This is about twenty acres, about nineteen point nine seven acres, which fourteen acres is SF-three, and the remainder will remain SF-two. We're thinking that we probably get about forty-six to fifty lots pending final design. Location, Post Oak Road between Providence Community and Terrace Oaks. Site challenges, infield site, heavy topography, major gas line, and trees. The project has a, the property has about a thirty or forty-foot drop across the property, so topography is real heavy, so it will be a challenge to develop the site. Density, forty-six to fifty lots on nineteen total acres, twenty-four include the church's property, two point four units per acre, our previous request was sixty-nine lots at three point four. So our density has come down quite a bit. As she talked to you about the PD surrounding us, as you can see, Providence, Providence of North, SF-three, we're looking to do SF-two along with SF-three. Up against Providence, we're going to do SF-two. Below that, we'll do SF-three. And the PDs all around us is anywhere from ten thousand to really four thousand square foot lots, depending on if you're looking at PD five, PD thirty-nine, and even if you go to PD fifty-seven, lots even get smaller, which is just a little bit right to the south, which almost borders us. Little bit to talk about, are we given a pass to go do anything we want to do? The answer to that question is no. We have to comply with all the city's developing codes and guidelines. So here's our preliminary lot layout approach. I thought I'd just show you this to try to ease some tension about what we're planning to do. We have not put all this together yet, but I wanted to show you that we will be using access points, the same one we had before. We have to tie into Providence, and it's still undetermined whether we would stub or put a role to the potential role that's in discussion, which is not here to, we're not here to discuss it tonight. So along Providence, you've seen that SF-two, those lots are going to be a hundred-foot wide lots. In the middle, these are fifties being shown right now. This is not a concept plan that we're moving forward with. When we come back, the top set of lots will be one hundred, the bottom set of lots will be eighty. Same street layout, same layout pretty much of everything. Pretty much no change to circulation and our connectivity. We have no choice. So everything in red has to comply with SF-three. Everything not being rezoned has to comply with SF-two. Straight zoning, and I don't think you guys have had one of those type cases probably in the last twenty, twenty-five years, because everyone wants the smaller lot. We wanted smaller lots too, but I guess you guys showed us how you felt about that. Home prices, we up a little bit. We think the starting home prices were started at about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Conclusion, challenging site, forty-six to fifty lots, we thinking it's what's going to come back through. We think we are doing some density transition. We're comparable to the Providence community to the north. We think you are compatible with the surrounding, and matter of fact, we exceed compatibility with the surrounding areas other than Providence. And staff supports this request. I think that's all I have. I'll take any questions you guys may have.
Are there any questions from council?
What's the, what's the difference in the number of lots you'd get on the track if you just stayed with the current zone, between what you're, and what you're asking?
Probably about forty, forty lots. We lose another ten lots. So we went down from sixty-nine to fifty, forty-five to fifty, and I think if we went straight SF-two, we'd probably be at about forty.
Does that make the project uneconomic for you?
Yes, it does. We think.
You, you think so?
Yes.
Based on the cost of the infrastructure?
And cost of dirt. Cost of the land.
Current cost of the dirt.
Yeah, the current cost of land.
Or what you have in contract?
Yeah, we've gone back and reworked. We started off at one number, and you keep reworking trying to get there, but I think the church probably just decided we just keep it if it goes there.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? Okay.
Do I have one quick question? What other property have you developed in the city of Corinth that's on your, on your first...
We did Parkside Farms, used to be the old on Eric Homeout Home site over on Fritz Lane and right by the ball field.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to a public hearing, and we have several people who'd like to speak to this issue. First item, first person is Sterling Sax. Please state your name and your address for the records, please. And you have three minutes.
Good evening. Sterling Sax is my name. I live at seventeen thirteen Birch Lane. And there's a very real disconnect between the city government, the citizens of Corinth. I recently saw a polling question online, and it was asking, you know, people who live in Corinth, "Do you think that the city of Corinth is going in the right direction?" Over ninety percent of people that answered the question said no. Corinth's going in the wrong direction. The vision inside this building is clearly not the desire of the residents, and a number of things, we're getting that many people saying they don't like what's going on. Now we have this proposal for a zoning change before us. The proposal, and, but this proposal lacks a site plan, as we've been talking about. There's a nice picture they brought up, but no real plan. And this is after the very same developer was denied recently on the very same piece of land, right? It says very clearly to me at least that the staff and the developer don't want any comment on the actual project itself. That's, that's what I'm getting. And that brings the question, what exactly could staff and the developer not want to talk about? Well, it's been mentioned a couple times tonight, and I think it's, we're certain that the proposed road on the south side that connects Post Oak to Corinth Parkway, nobody wants to talk about it. We're not here to talk about it. It doesn't exist. It's very much a, but a big part of the twenty forty plan, and in the last two weeks, I've learned from the staff directly that this road is very much part of this plan. It might not be in that picture that Remberg showed, but it's very much part of the plan. And they advised me, or they told me, that they're actively exploring for legal ways to force me to pay for that road after they take my land. Raise my eyebrows. If anybody wants to see the emails, let me know. I could, I could give them to you. And it begs the question, does anyone here think that the residents on Silver Meadow Lane wish their small street be turned into a thoroughfare? I think they already answered that. There's a couple here came out first. But I would ask the council, does anybody here in the council wish for their home street to be turned into a thoroughfare right out in front? I guess it's no. I'm here to ask for two things from the council today. I'm not asking for a deny. I don't want you guys to deny this zoning proposal. What I'm asking for is it to be tabled and brought up again when there's a real site plan that the community can talk about. You can talk about it in the front room rather than the back room. Number two, I'm asking if the land that we're, for this road, that there be no road when this plan, when this plan comes up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alana, is it Fick? Okay. Please state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Alana Fickers. I live at twenty-seven twelve Cherokee Trail in Corinth. First, I want to say thank you to the city for contacting text regarding the stoplight at Swisher and Park Ridge by Lake Dallas High School. The two new left-turn lanes and dedicated left-turn signal are greatly appreciated. Second, I am against the zoning change requested. I don't want the area to be oversaturated and super dense with houses. Thank you for asking about whether or not this will become a PD, because that's my fear as well now and in the future. I understand, I didn't understand what a PD meant until now, and I'm shocked at how the city has used PDs to skirt the requirements and guidelines of single-family zoning areas. For example, if Ashford had followed the assigned zone requirements, it never would have had those super small lots in the middle of the neighborhood. I do not want another Ashford neighborhood because it will oversaturate Corinth and overwhelm the city services. We need to slow down on building and let the city departments catch up to the influx of new home buyers and apartment dwellers that are about to take over the areas already being built. And I am against the expansion of Silver Meadow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike King? Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Mike King, twenty-six ten Zachary. This is going to be a little different for y'all. I have mixed feelings about this hillside development. I spent a good ten, fifteen minutes out in the lobby with the developer, very nice man, spoke to him very professionally and nice, and we had, I had the concerns about, like Ms. Henderson raised up, about how many times we're changing zoning, and then we come in right behind it with a PD plan and then highly density and saturated. I know Ms. Alana just used Ashford, where it's on the SF-four, seven thousand square foot lots, there's twenty-eight hundred square foot lots. That's not my opinion, that's straight off D-CAD. A lot of these saturated lots, if you go in and look at D-CAD too, and I encourage you, amazing thing is, I sent every one of y'all an email, and two people replied back. No, yes, yes, no, no, and no. And specifically, the email was about some of these PDs, about why are we doing this? Why are we saturating? Because there's been a lot of conversations about, "I didn't say this, I said this, I didn't have this conversation." This gentleman out there assured me that he was going straight, straight zoning. Ms. Henderson, you asked a great question. Is there any ordinance or law that prevents this developer, six weeks, four weeks down the road after this zoning change, if it was to be approved, come in with a PD, and here we are again? Why is that a concern? There's still a lot of acreage in that area, not a lot, but enough acreage, that we're also setting, it's in, it's in the vision plan. When you go to the neighborhood section and you read it, it talks about the smooth transition flow from one neighborhood to the other. So we take SF-two, which is up there, we go to SF-three, and if we don't come in with a PD, what are we going to do? SF-four with a PD on the surrounding land? We're going to have all this density? What's going to happen to the less, the rest of the land on Lake Sharon? Before my time runs out, one thing I want to bring up. If I was to ask any of y'all to build a house, your dream home, with your dream savings, you're going home to the good Lord home. And there's going to be twenty-five homes built around you, but I told you, you cannot design your driveway until all the homes were built. How would you feel? You wouldn't like it. It's the way we feel about this road. Why can we not have some open conversations about the thoroughfare road? Now it says, I've been told that there have been no conversations. We have emails that dispute that. Number one, and number two, it's always said, "The developer don't have a say in the roads." That's up to the city. How come Mr. John Bonns, probably a school bird, the developers want to take the road out? And that's in his plan. So which is it? Do the developers have a say, or do they not? I think we need to have some open conversation, two-way dialogue back and forth about this road. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Hale? Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Marilyn Hale, seventeen oh four North Haven Drive in Corinth.
I'll make it short and sweet. I'm just opposed to any lots or any rezoning change that in- increases the density, even if it's just a slight amount. We're getting away from the original vision of the city of Corinth. So I'm just opposed to anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jerry Hale?
He just.
Okay. Okay. Austin Ortega? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Austin Ortega, twenty-eight oh one Custer Drive, Corinth, Texas. Um, I actually share a lot of sentiment, uh, with Sterling on this. Um, I'm, and you guys have heard me talk before. I'm really in favor of single home, single family home developments in Corinth. Again, we've got a, actually a younger audience on this side than we usually do. One of the younger people that's in here and the people I work with, my friends, are looking for homes though. They're trying to find that. They're in apartments. They're looking for these houses. But they're also looking for a yard, which is something that I've been told isn't what my generation is looking for. It turns out they all are. The only thing I can find are these houses that are eighteen hundred square foot next door to each other. They're townhouses. I go, cool. They're not townhouses. They're what functionally they are. Density is always a concern. Realistically, I would love for this developer to come in and just build the SF two across, straight across the board. Clearly, that's not financially sound, but maybe there is something we can work out to find a better answer here. That one supports the residents and neighbors, and two helps the developer find something that they can, they can achieve and make a profit out. Because ideally, that's what we want for Corinth. Continual growth that makes everyone happy. It doesn't need to be a we win, you lose situation. It should be a we win, you win too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other, anybody else that would want to speak to this issue in the audience? Not? Close the public hearing. Entertain a motion undecided.
Mayor, make a motion to deny with discussion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes. So two things. First, uh, Mr. King, I must have missed your email somehow. The last email I had from you is May tenth. So if you don't mind resending that to me, I would love to respond to your email. Second, uh, I have no issues with the density, uh, that's being requested. SF two, SF three, SF four are normal neighborhood densities. So when we look at the comp plan, when we look at what's gonna be happening in that area, you would expect to see SF two, SF three, SF four. And I think the densities that are proposed here or requested are great. The problem that I have is the first plan that came through didn't do much to make sure that it fit in well with the neighbors. We still have neighbors over there that, uh, are gonna end up with sharing the fence with three other people. I think there are some simple fixes and there was no discussion, at least with me, on, on how we could get those things fixed. Uh, number one. Number two, uh, the PD process, I think, is, is, is an important process. Especially when we're redesigning, uh, areas of Corinth. I'm typically opposed to just providing zoning rights without having some sort of an idea of what's gonna be built there. Especially considering the reason that, that I made the motion to deny the first time. Uh, had less to do with this, with the density and more to do with the fact that the plan did not fit well with the, with the surrounding neighborhoods.
Any other?
I have a couple. They're a little different. Um, the, this, this particular site is on a portion of Post Oak that is two lanes, and I spoke with the city manager. Uh, just to refresh my memory, there's some challenges with expanding that part of Post Oak. And I think increasing the density without securing, uh, any solutions to that could be problematic. And I think it probably feeds the flames of the concerns of these folks that this is somehow tied to, or there's some kind of background discussion going on related to the expansion of this other street. I want to assure you that if there is, I'm not aware of it, and I, I doubt there is. The thoroughfare plan is there, is kind of our, our best idea of what infrastructure is gonna be needed in the future, looking out decades. And it's a tool that developers use to know whether or not they're gonna have to dedicate certain parts of their property for that right of way when they buy it. And so I, sir, I feel like maybe either you've been told some things that are incorrect, or there's been some misunderstanding, and I apologize for that. Certainly, the, the city is not trying to take your property, and nothing about this development has anything to do with that. The things that you said make me think that there was some discussion with you about if your property were sold to a developer, some part of it might be dedicated, but I don't know. I wasn't part of those discussions. And like I said, to the extent there was a miscommunication about that, uh, I apologize. Uh, certainly no one at the city is trying to intimidate you or threaten you with some kind of, uh, forced, uh, dedication of your property in an inappropriate circumstance. So to the developer, I, you know, the last time you were here, I didn't really voice my concerns. I had the same concerns then that I do now about increasing this density. Just to the, to the general folks that are there here that have questions about why we have so many PDs. I would say as a general proposition, we have a lot of PDs because our ability to regulate the quality of the product keeps being reduced by the state of Texas. Uh, an example of that is in, when we had the last big hurricane, I can't remember which one it was. There was a bill that went through that was supposed to be about allowing quick redevelopment after the hurricane. Well, really, it was just a developer's bill so that they, we couldn't regulate any materials that they used. So one of the tools that we have to try to control the product that goes up around your existing homes are PDs. And the leverage we mostly have is density. And so that's why you see a lot of PDs. If, if you're concerned about the overuse of PDs or why cities are allowing, uh, more density, I would encourage you to ta- to talk to your state representatives about why they're passing bills that don't allow cities to control the quality of the development. Because that's, that's part of the problem. And so when you see all these PDs on the map, that's the principal reason. Because we can't typically do enough to make you happy, in my opinion anyway, unless we have, are in some kind of negotiation with the developer. And, and like I said, this, the carrot we've got is the density, and that's about it. So if you have that concern, please go to your state representative. I don't think we're the problem. I think that's the problem. So, so we can, yeah, well, we can have some dialogue afterwards. But I, I just wanted y'all to know where I was coming from and, and I wanted, you know, if, if you want to know what I think about why we've got all those PDs, that's why. It's not a mystery. Uh, and it's not a conspiracy with the developer. We're doing our best to ensure that the quality of development in Corinth is as high as it can be. You know, we, none of us up here get anything out of this, uh, other than pizza when we come for the meeting. We're just doing our best, uh, and we're certainly not doing it perfectly. But I can assure you, there's not anything going on behind the scenes, uh, to trick you or do something that we think is against your interest or ours, you know? We, we live here too, uh, and we want, we want the things that happen around you to be consistent with what we'd be hap- happy with hap- happening around us. And we're, we're not trying to sacrifice you for us or any other benefit. So, uh, that's probably more than I intended to say. But, but I've, I've got issues with the density there because of the challenges with that roadway and the proximity of the density and the challenges with the roadway to both Hawk Elementary and to the middle school there.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make one more comment related to what Sam had just said. Uh, when we're talking densities, uh, especially when we're talking a neighborhood like this that's around SF two to SF three, there was a law that just failed by one vote in the Texas State Legislature. And that law would have prohibited cities from approving or making laws to approve to make lots larger than fourteen hundred square feet, wider than twenty feet, or deeper than sixty feet. Meaning when this comes back around, if this passes, the city can't do anything to stop fourteen hundred square foot properties. What he just presented were ten and fourteen thousand square foot properties, right? So there's a lot of stuff going on on the state side that really ties the hands of this council. And, and the council spends an awful lot of time working with developers to make sure that we get products in that are gonna fit. And so back to the point, that's why I've recommended not approving this one because I don't think that we've put the work in to make it fit.
Any other comments? Council?
We're voting yea to deny, correct?
Yea to deny. The pass is three to one. Okay. And number ten, conduct a public hearing to consider an act and amendment to the city of Corinth's impact fees for water, wastewater, and roadway capital improvements. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our director of public works will introduce this item and answer any questions that you have and introduce our consultant.
Mayor and Council, this is the, uh, impact fee that we had the workshop on a couple of weeks ago. So Joette and Peter here to kind of give a quick overview of everything. I'm Kevin Horn.
Thank you, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be a condensed version of the presentation you saw a couple of weeks ago. We're just gonna run through again the results of the impact fee study, including the land use assumptions and the capital improvements plans and the maximum assessable fee as part of that calculation. Again, I'm Pete Kelly with King and Horn. I took the role of land use assumptions and the roadway impact fees in this project. And after, after, after the deal, I will have the water and wastewater impact fees. Just to briefly cover the components of the impact fee study. The foundation was the land use assumptions, which was built from the guiding documents of the conference plan and the future land use plan and inputs from staff on known developments that are, that are coming in. And also the road patterns in the city. This is your future land use plan here. And, uh, the result of that effort was this table here, which is the units of growth over the next ten years. Uh, this is just a projection. Uh, so we have, uh, just over, uh, eleven hundred single-family units projected, just over thirty-five hundred multifamily which are projected. Then for the employment uses, those are categorized into three different categories. Basically, which is your industrial agricultural uses. Service, uh, encompasses institutional and office uses and retail, essentially everything else, anywhere you go to shop, dine, or entertaining. That's the retail. So just over two million square feet of those uses projected over the next ten years. And so that, that sets the stage for us to, and then we have the, the demand in service units projected. That sets the stage for us to develop the CIPs and calculate the impact fees. So for the roadway impact fees, uh, we use the master thoroughfare plan to calculate the needed road improvements to handle that growth for the next ten years. And the result of that calculation was just over a thousand dollars per, uh, per vehicle mile, which is a service unit used for the roadway impact fees. And I'll go ahead and let Joette cover the water and wastewater impact fees.
Thank you, Pete. I will be discussing the water and wastewater impact fee results. So similar to the roadway section, the water impact fees were calculated based on determining a impact fee capital improvements plan. And those projects eligible to be recovered by impact fees were costed up and, um, a maximum recoverable cost was determined from that. And then from that, the service units projected in the ten-year window was also determined. With those efforts, the maximum assessable impact fee per service unit on the water side was determined to be one thousand three hundred and thirty compared to the current adopted rate of two thousand two hundred and four. On the wastewater side, it was very similar. The wastewater side has three different basins. So impact fee calculations were conducted for each of the three different basins, the Opportunity East Basin, Opportunity West, and the Denton Basin. Similarly to the water side, and, uh, capital improvements plan was determined for that. And those numbers, given those projects that were determined from that, that were eligible to be recovered by impact fees. And the amount of growth that was determined in the Opportunity East Basin, the Opportunity West Basin, and the Denton Basin, we were able to determine a maximum impact fee, um, cost assessable. So on the Opportunity East section, the maximum impact fee assessable was determined to be, um, five hundred and eighty-two compared to the current adopted rate of one thousand two hundred and seventy-one. And on the Opportunity West Basin, it was determined that the maximum assessable impact fee is determined to be four thousand seven hundred and eighty-five compared to the current adopted rate of one thousand five hundred and ten. And in the Denton Basin, the Denton Basin didn't have any, um, projects that were eligible to be recovered by impact fees, so there's no, um, maximum assessable cost for Denton. And these next couple of slides will show a comparison of the impact fees that are current, current, the current adopted impact fees versus what was collected in, um, twenty seventeen versus the maximum assessable impact fee determined in the twenty twenty-three study. So this table is just a visual to show the comparisons between what was determined as the maximum assessable in the twenty seventeen study and what was adopted, so the current rate versus the maximum assessable cost in twenty twenty-three. And you can see those items for the roadway impact fees, the water impact fees, and each of the three different basins for wastewater. And this next section is going to detail the comparison between the impact fees that are currently determined as the maximum assessable in this study versus what is currently adopted versus cities, surrounding cities in the area. So starting off with the roadway section, as you can see on this visual, the current adopted rate is about two thousand. The twenty twenty-three maximum assessable is three thousand seven hundred and seventy-one, which is right in between Little Elm and Frisco. For the water impact fee comparison, the twenty twenty-three assessable determined was one thousand three hundred and thirty in between the Colony and Little Elm on the upper side of this chart. And the current adopted rate is two thousand two hundred and four, shown towards the middle of the chart, next to Frisco and Rallett. And for wastewater, the current assessable, the current adopted impact being the maximum assessable for the Opportunity East Basin and the Opportunity West Basin is showing this visual. So the maximum assessable cost for Opportunity East is five hundred and eighty-two, which is shown at the top of this chart, right above Colleyville. And versus the current twenty seventeen adopted rate, which is shown in between Rallett and McKinney. And for the Opportunity West Basin, that current adopted rate is one thousand five hundred and ten compared to the twenty twenty-three maximum assessable. the 2023 maximum assessable cost that was determined in this study of 4,785, which is towards the bottom of this chart, right next to Denton. And that concludes our presentation. We'll open it up to any questions and we can pass it off to Andy.
Are there any questions from council? No questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We don't need to confirm a motion now?
Public here.
This is a public.
Open for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would want to speak to this issue? Please take your name and your address for the record, please.
Reginald, Randall 4316, Laurel Lake, Flat Mountain, Texas. I have a question about this particular item, but can I speak to any item in my three minutes? Is that allowable? Okay. First of all, I want to address Mr. Berg. You made a comment about the road out of Post Oak and Lightway and so forth. All the right away for Post Oak would have been dedicated per our preliminary rent plaque. But why didn't Post Oak would have been taken care of during the plating process? That's not something that you would have lost out on by not approving the project. If this project were to develop at SF2 to SF3, the people on problems would get the exact same block layout that they're going to get at SF2, who'd be giving them the same thing. And I tried to show you guys that. The SF3 portion just allowed us to get just a little bit more density, which was very minor, and no one's really affected. And that would have probably been one of the better opportunities for the city. I would like to go on record and request that you guys, one of you guys can do this. I can't. I would like to get you guys to reconsider this application because, now for you today, but this application is by far a good opportunity for the City of Corinth, because if you force this to go back to the church for financial concessions, to do it at SF2, you know, everybody loses. Church loses money, city loses tax revenue, developer loses money. The project we have coming before you tonight, I had before you at 56, 50, 46 to 50 lots would have been a win for pretty much everybody, you know? And I think you guys should reconsider. For the council, I did reach out to several of you guys to get calls, to talk about the project, to find out what would you have liked to have seen. I did not get a call back. I was informed unofficially that you mailed an instructive not to talk to me. And maybe that was legal. I don't know. But Mr. Scott, I did reach out to you, to talk to you on more than one occasion. And I will be reaching out again.
And leave a voicemail, text me, send an email, do something. I have no voicemails, no texts, no nothing from you.
Of course, I reached out to Steve, Mr. Olson, I reached out to you as well. But I would be reaching out to you guys again. I will be asking somebody to bring this project back, just as it stands for reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Public hearing is closed.
Yeah, I think we're asking for a motion tonight just to accept the report as presented and bring, and for the staff to bring back the actual ordinance for approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Senator Janet, consider an act on the appointment of chair and vice chair of Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is actually a little bit of cleanup from when the council made their board appointments a couple of weeks ago. We failed to remind you that you needed to make the appointments for the chair and vice chair for the planning and zoning commission. And as your staff report says, currently, Alan Nelson serves as your chair, Mark Klingel serves as your vice chair, and I have understanding that both of those are willing to continue in other roles if that is the desire of the council.
Is there any question? Entertained a motion?
May I make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 12, consider an act on assigning first and second alternates for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a little bit more cleanup from when you made your appointments, as you see in your staff report. You had a new appointment with Chris Smith, who replaced Ryan Ford-Herald as alternate one on the commission. And we are making a recommendation that Kristen Jones, who has served as the second alternate, has been on the board a little bit longer, actually be moved up to alternate one and Mr. Smith moved to alternate two. Again, just a little bit of cleanup.
Entertained a motion on that item?
I'll make a motion to approve this proceeding.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Consider an act on an interlocal agreement between the City of Corinth on behalf of the Police Department and the Lake Dallas Independent School District to provide a school resource officer at Corinth Elementary School and Chatty Shores Elementary School and authorizing the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, our police chief, Jerry Garner, will present this item to you as he's walking up. You have a revised agreement in front of you tonight. There were a few things we were working on as this packet went out, and Chief will talk a little bit about that.
Mr. Mayor, Council, you're aware, I'm sure, that this year's state legislature decreed that every public school, every school campus in the state has to have an armed guard there, preferably a law enforcement officer. Lake Dallas Independent School District has two elementarys in Corinth that currently do not have SROs. There's also a Lake Dallas High School in our city has an SRO there. This agreement allows the city to provide two additional SROs, one for each of those elementary schools. Now, under this agreement, and it goes for, automatically renews, it goes for five years, for the first three years of this, the Independent School District pays 100% of that officer's salary and benefits. After three years, then they pay 75%, and the city pays 25%. What has taken us some time, and while you're getting the late notification on this, we've been working closely, Patricia has put an awful lot of work. City attorney has worked hard with the attorney from Lake Dallas ISD to be sure we're satisfying both the state requirements and protecting the city's interests, because it's key that the state statute puts the responsibility for having those guardians, if you will, in the schools. It puts it on the school district, not on the City of Corinth. So, we wanted to be sure that was there, and that's in this agreement now. So, that is what the purpose of this is. We've selected the SROs to young officers that want to be in the schools. We just can't put them in there yet until we backfill their positions, which we have not been able to hire as yet. So, I'd be happy, Mr. Mayor, to answer any questions that we might have on this.
Are there any questions from council?
I do. So, you said the first three years, school pays 100%?
That's correct.
And then it goes 75, 25?
Yes, ma'am.
Why? Why do we pick up the call 25% if the state has mandated this for the schools?
That is the agreement. 75, 25 is the agreement we have right now with Denton Schools, for example. We've had a couple of SROs in Denton Schools at 75 for 25 several years. We've had the 75, 25 there for some time, and we're trying to be consistent. But the reason we're asking for that 100% initially is this isn't something we'd initially planned on budgeting for. So, this will give us some time before we change that down to 75, 25.
So, I'm thinking we should get 100% all the time. I mean, they're mandated, they get the taxes, but that's just my thoughts.
Do they do it because when school is out, there's still a police officer for us?
Yes, ma'am. There will still be somebody that we can take. Once the summer gets here, once the officer uses his vacation time, et cetera, then that officer's on patrol, and we can use him or her for other reasons.
For Christmas breaks and...
Exactly.
Okay.
That helps us a lot. And in an emergency, we can still pull that officer out of the school temporarily if we have a major emergency. So, that's something that's important to us. And one of the things we got into the agreement as well, if there's something, officer sickness, training, what have you, what the city attorney has been careful, we got in there, is you can get that officer out of there temporarily. In other words, if you have an emergency two blocks down the street, a serious emergency, it'd be foolish to have a cop two blocks away and he can't leave and go to it. So, we've made ourselves happy to vote to do that.
But then if something happens, why he's away? Are we liable?
I think you can find an attorney that'll sue you for anything. And that would be a question for an attorney, more than for me.
And I think that was part of the original concern, you know, staring at Patricia, so please correct me if I say something wrong, but that part of the initial language in the agreement when they proposed this, we were concerned that it did assign a little bit of liability to us in terms of satisfying this new law that is not for cities, it's for the schools. And so, I think the new language that we have in there actually addresses that, and we feel better that we're not.
Some of the major issues were the continuous coverage issue. And, you know, certainly, we all want someone in there so the kids are safe, but that just wasn't a practical reality. That might not happen. So, we built something in. We went through a couple of options with the school district and told them, basically, you need to have a backup plan in the event that we can't, you know, fully provide officers all the time, because we can't guarantee they're always going to be in. And they rejected that option. We came back and the chief came up with what he believed were the parameters under which someone might have to leave, major emergency within the city. So, we built in some of that, just to kind of build that in. And we did change the language to trump the statute. The statute's very clear that the exposure and the responsibility is on the school district. And to the chief's point, I mean, if someone gets sued, we probably all get sued, but I think we've done the best that we could here and, you know, still try to do everything to keep providing security to the schools.
Are there any other questions? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Entertained a motion on this item?
May I make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Consider and take appropriate action on ordinance amending Chapter 170, Planning, Engineering, and Building Fees by amending fees for zoning and site plans, plotting, commercial construction, residential construction, electric, tube, plumbing, and mechanical, miscellaneous process, health inspection, other inspection and fees, appeals, variances, and process of Title XV, fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Corinth, Texas, and repealing Section 50.37, inspection fees charged to contractor-developers, subsection 150.106B, fees, and subsection 150.202C, certificate of occupancy of Chapter 150, building regulations of Title XV, land usage, and providing an effective date. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our Director of Public Works, Glenn Barker, will explain this and cover what some of these changes are.
Mayor, Council, thank you. Glad you had to read that, not me. A mouthful. So, the UDC, Chapter 170, needed to be updated because legislation, the House Bill 3492, made it so that the city has to assess fees based on third-party fees or actual cost. So, what I've done, you have the ordinance and the packets, I just kind of went over and made all the changes. Pretty easy to see. We kind of talked about them or go over them. So, part of the zoning and site plans, planning development fee, that's C2, just so we can understand how I did that. C2. And then it's just, so all the numbers that are missing are ones that haven't changed. So, C2, they went from 500 plus $50 per acre to 750 plus 50, and at a maximum of 3,000. So, I'm going to go read over each one of those. So, plating, they did the $5. And then the commercial construction building permits, they went from 95 cents to 75 cents. And then the commercial re-roof is actually a new line item, and that one's at 4 cents per square foot. Once again, the processes part of it, the building permit went up 10 cents, and the re-roofing's a new one there as well. Processes for electrical, plumbing, and mechanical, everything was $75 per unit, per building, it went up to $85. And then for miscellaneous processes, there are multiple items that have changed. Swimming pools went up $50. In-ground, or the actual signed permit fee did not change, but the variance request the council changed from 150 to 300. Demolition and concrete pour went up $50 per inspection. And then lawn sprinklers went up also in fence maintenance. As for other inspections fees, annual multifamily inspections, that's a new one in the ordinance. It's at $800 per complex or $12 per unit. And engineering infrastructure review and inspection fees are the inspection of the civil plans. Those are going to be at third-party cost or whatever a reasonable quote would be from a consulting firm. Right now, the one we have is at $90, so that would be $90. And then it would be time and a half if it's overtime. And most developers request overtime. We don't just make it. We don't decide, the developer does. Single-family rental certification and occupancy, that's also a new one. That would be $50 at the time of inspection. And then appeals and variances, both went up $50 per process.
Before you move on, number five.
Yes.
So, every apartment complex now is going to have this $800 fee for an inspect, like, what's the inspection that's in it's new? So, what type of inspection?
So, this is an annual multifamily inspection from the building department? Do you... I looked at him yelling, I put him on the spot. Cleveland's not available, can I? Our building officials out today, but this McKinley plant planner for the record, we understand that this is whenever there's turnover in units, it's a life, health, and safety inspection that is, that was, that would be conducted and that will be required of multifamily units as they're, as they're required. I mean, I also, and Fire Marshall also conducts annual inspections. They check smoke alarms, sprinkler systems, sprinkler heads, and all those fire and life safety on a per-unit basis once a year.
You said whenever they turn over, so an apartment complex can turn over a lot?
Potentially. I don't have the full answer. If it's annual, I believe that's on a, on a per building basis. I just had mine in my complex done, and it was just, they said, we're going through all the units, whether they're occupied or not. So, I mean, I misspoke in, but I can assure you the fire inspection and building, they go once a year through all units, whether they're occupied or unoccupied.
But they've done it once a year for years, where there's been no fee, and now there is a fee. I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any questions? Do you want to back up any slides?
I think, I think the inspection of single-family is new.
Yes, but that was the other one. If you look back, it says new. So, like...
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, I think that the fee, when we talked about in our election, was because we're doing the single family, now that's adding a lot of additional work, and this was somewhat of an offset on staff time.
Are there any other questions? Entertained a motion on this item?
May I like to make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Cast your vote.
It's unanimous. Item 15, consider an act on the amendment and restate chapter 3 in the economic development agreement with RAK Real Estate Equities, current LLC.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you are aware, we have a existing agreement with RAK Real Estate Equities for the property located at the corner of North Corrin Street and Shady Shores. We've talked about this in a previous setting. That agreement, actually, we're asking that you consider an amendment to add twelve thousand dollars to the offered incentive package from the city. That is for the sixty-six thousand square foot industrial building at that corner. The reason we're asking for this increase, as we described previously, the developer has agreed to build a public road on the west side of that property. Michelle will speak to that a little bit more in the next item, that we believe is, encourages economic development to the south by creating connectivity at that point. The additional twelve thousand dollars is really to help cover the cost of a water line that will be included in that project. And again, this is really just about making a property to the south more attractive for economic development.
Okay, is there any questions on this item? If not, I entertain a motion on this item.
May I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous.
Item 16, consider an act on the alternative compliance tree preservation request by the applicant property owner, RAK Real Estate Equities, current LLC. To exclude healthy, protected trees removed from both building footprint from the tree mitigation calculation in consideration of furthering economic development and promoting the principle of the comprehensive plan on approximately six point three acres located at the southwest corner of West Shady Shores Road and North Corrin Street, case number AC 23-001, that's RAK Tree Preservation Building Footprint Exclusion Alternative Compliance.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Planning manager, Michelle Mike, who will cover this item, answering any questions that she has.
Oh, I did.
Thank you, Council, Mayor and Council. This is a unique request. It was something that, if you recall, we wrote into the tree preservation ordinance when we were considering, how might we have an impact? How might we consider trees when we have an economic development opportunity as well as the developer who follows the principles of the comprehensive plan? So, let me give you a little bit of the existing site information, and then we'll talk about the details. This is a project at the northernmost, northernmost section of North Corrin Street. It will be, it's a six point two, almost three-acre site at Shady Shores, southwest corner of Shady Shores and North Corrin Street. It's a gateway into our community, leading to the city center, NCTC. You have the single-family on the east side, zoning up on the east side of North Corrin Street. We have greenway trails, that was recently approved, and we have a single-family residential on the west side. We have a lot of existing industrial properties, a mix of some added properties, a Hondu lane, which is a, an unimproved, I don't know if it's in the right term, Patricia, but I think it might be like prescriptive easement, providing access. But it is on the subject site property. The site is heavily treed, and it's also just north of vacant industrially-zoned land. Heavily, heavily treed, if you know this corner, significant slope. It's industrially-zoned, and it's been like that for some time. I mentioned the unimproved Hondu lane that provides informal access to the properties to the west. And the properties surrounding the RAK industrial site are located here on the west side of North Corrin Street. So, the current design, the current proposal is to construct a sixty-six thousand, three hundred square foot warehouse distribution center. Now, this is a use by right in the industrial district. The developer, we had the site plan, and we've been reviewing it. They're on course to meet all of the UDC standards, so it's administratively, it will be administratively approved. It can happen. I mentioned that it's a heavily-treed site. The developer has been very willing and cooperative to preserve and create, it's been a long day, retaining laws to protect and preserve many of the groves that are surrounding the property. And I'll show you a bit more in a moment. And they're concentrated groves. They're also proposing to design and build Hondu Lane as a public street. It also involves some cooperation with the surrounding property owner, Mr. Floyd, who has been in cooperation with the city, along with Zach Rackison, who's the developer, to dedicate the land that's necessary outside of the subject site in order to provide connectivity, formal connectivity, to all of the properties on the west side to increase the marketability and improve those sites for development. In addition, a key part of this is that the, we need a different mask here, okay? The new part of this is, a key part of this is this cul-de-sac that will be dedicated by the adjacent property owner to support the RAK development, not associated with RAK owners, but they'll be providing the cul-de-sac dedication right of way to the city, provides opportunity to provide access to the industrially-zoned property to the south. And you'll see that we say possible distribution warehouse here, because we have a lot of development pressure on this site. Without this project, and I will talk a little bit more, without providing some formal public access, all truck traffic would be exiting out onto North Corrin Street, which is our key corridor for our town center, and could go north or south. The goal of this, and the developer has been quite cooperative, and over time, to off, to agree to do this, would provide access out to Shady Shores and then on over to the west to I-35. So, again, just talking about improving access for all of the properties and preserving, protecting potentially negative impacts associated with heavy truck traffic leading along our key corridor to envision Corrin City Center and Aurora Park. And as mentioned, Mr. Floyd, Floyd Properties would be also collaborating in this. So, I say all of that because the original design, and this is a little bit different, I want to point this out, is for a sixty-three thousand square foot distribution center that the RAK project had originally proposed. And you can see Hondu Lane was still, just left as it was, providing this informal access, though their main access for their project was out onto Shady Shores and onto North Corrin Street, without any interconnectivity to the property to the south, or improving anything for the properties to the west. Staff, recognizing that the potential of impact to our downtown, reached out to the developer, the potential developer that was here at the time, as well as the major property owners here to the west, and said, would you be willing to sit down and come up with a collaborative? They were. Zach Rackison already owned the property. He had the lead, he said, why, why would I do this? I'm already here. The other developers, this developer, property owner in particular, said, I'd like to come to the table. I'll offer this area for the cul-de-sac, and is offering a sliver that's needed to make this improvement on the, on the current site plan. Under the original proposal, there was less tree preservation. There was no incentive really to get up to the twenty-one percent or growth protection. Hondu Lane, again, would remain unimproved, no formal access for the properties. And there were limited possibilities also to improve the situation, if you know that area. And also, no opportunity if that made the, made the site design to make a connection for any possible development out to I-35, to lessen the impact on North Corrin. So, with all of that said, the developer came to the table, was willing to design, build, and incrementally at first, talk about just doing this segment for his property, which would provide formal access to the properties to the west. Our concern over time through the discussion was that the cul-de-sac may not ever materialize if we just had the land dedication. We went back to Zach, and he agreed to construct and build the cul-de-sac as well, and worked to now preserve twenty-three, twenty point three percent of groves of trees all along the perimeter. Now, this does several things. One, it meets the minimum that we have in our ordinance for healthy, protected trees to receive this building footprint exclusion. He's providing concentrated groves, protecting view corridor from the adjacent residential across the street. He's effectively incorporated those into the overall design, and he's using them to provide a natural buffer for the properties to the east. He's also constructing Hondu Lane, which will further economic development and promote the principles of the comprehensive plan by promoting interconnectivity and preserving the footprint. In all, when you go through the calculation of our worksheet, and you exclude the building footprint, it's hard to see, but the building footprint traces along, whoops, excuse me, traces along this line. So, it's only this area that would receive the exclusion. That equates to about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. The cost to design and construct Hondu Lane, this doesn't include the land or the other factors, is five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars that the developer is, has, assuming. Whoops. So, there are many intangibles also to consider with this five hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So, we are receiving the concentrated groves with the slopes intact to buffer the view, in particular, along North Corrin Street. The recommendation of staff is to approve this as long, it's in your staff appropriate, I'll read it, to approve the alternative compliance request for the building footprint exclusion, which resulted in no additional mitigation provided. And that is actually based on, when you do the calculations for tree credits, the developer with his percentage saved at twenty point three is meeting all of the bonuses that are permitted in our base district, so there's nothing, he is meeting the ordinance. And it's, those calculations are on the attached, is a attachment one. The applicant also would agree to enter into agreement with the city to ensure that timing and any other matters related to the associated construction of Hondu Lane as a public street. And we ask that you direct staff to prepare an agreement for future approval by city council. Also, in addition, the building of the, the approval of the building for its exclusion is predicated on Hondu Lane being constructed in its entirety, including the cul-de-sac as the component of the RAK project. And then finally, should the construction of the Hondu Lane as a public street not materialize, the tree removal and tree removal has occurred, we would ask in that agreement that the applicant would be responsible for the mitigation value of the trees removed within the footprint. They would still be required to preserve those buffers. And also noting that this does not constitute tree removal permit. The applicant is here to answer any questions that you might have, and if you have questions, it may.
Are there any questions from Council?
I do. It's just really fast to me, because I wasn't here, I, I don't. So, in this picture, Michelle, the little, the little red down here at the very bottom, between the two black, right there?
A stormwater detention pond.
Okay, okay, so that's why those trees are going out?
Yes.
Okay, and explain to me the benefit of the cul-de-sac. I don't quite understand, like, is that road gonna go through eventually? I don't understand why a cul-de-sac would go there.
Yes, so, I wish I had access to our overall aerial, but let me, let me try. So, this property is currently vacant, and the only access without this cul-de-sac or access going through, oh, this is the original sign, let me go, let me go up. Without, without some formal access out to Shady Shores to get out to I-35, truck traffic, a truck court here, and even Zach's trucks could and would exit out onto North Corrin. They could choose to go north, they could choose to go south. This developer for sure would travel either in this direction or north to get to their site. Now, they can come in, or under this scenario, they could come in off of I-35, drop down, and hit the cul-de-sac, which would have access to their truck court. All of the, you know, the office or the, you know, storefront, like, would access and park in the front of the structure.
I guess when I think of a cul-de-sac, I think it closed.
Oh, they would have curb cuts, and you can kind of see, I can't zoom in on this, but you can see, this is, there's like a little.
Okay, because when I think of cul-de-sac, I just think, would it be somewhere for someone to turn around?
Yes, in a way, because the trucks, when they come down, they could make a, make a turn, or anyone.
Or where that red line is, that's a cut, and it could go straight across into this potential future development. Okay.
Good question.
I don't have any more tree questions either.
I have a question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Michelle, this may be a little bit off-subject, but I have a concern with the Shady Shores Road being redone down by the railroad track. It didn't seem very, back to the west to get on I-35?
Yes.
That didn't seem very conducive for eighteen-wheel traffic.
Let me ask Glenn, who is our public works director, who is running that project, the road improvement project.
Thank you.
That is not the new idea.
Oh, it is not?
No, it's not, that problem is not, that's the city, not there to count.
Perhaps we could ask the developer's engineer and the developer about whether or not that's conducive for their. This is Brandon Middleton with Kimley Horn.
Just state your name and your address for records, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Brandon Middleton with Kimley Horn, at A31 Cherry Street, 4. This type of product has a much narrower truck court, because we're expecting much smaller trucks. We're not, we're nowhere near what's shown in the site plan to the south, but the, that they're expecting, you know, larger eighteen-wheelers. We're expecting more like box trucks, very few deliveries. We're just not, we're not designing our facility to handle trucks like that, so we're not expecting them to make deliveries. So, the majority of our traffic would access the site from I-35 and off of Shady Shore. But frankly, if, if the road narrows or stays as it is today with the, the smaller box truck, I don't have a concern at it, of that as a trucking engineer.
Okay, so I have a full-size pickup truck, four-door, and I have a trailer, single axle trailer that I get from the Regination Boat Storage. And when I cross the railroad track, there are curbs in the middle of the road that are somewhat challenging for me. I've been driving a while, can't imagine even a panel truck like what you're talking, having to navigate. So, my concern is, if I'm a truck driver and I'm coming to this facility on a regular basis, I learn not to go across the railroad track there. And then my concern is, what Michelle talked about, now we're coming back down towards the city and City Hall, and the Agora, where public people are supposed to be and not trucks. That's my concern.
It's a valid concern. I, I don't have an answer for existing conditions that are inadequate for truck traffic. All I can say is that we have much smaller trucks than any other, I'll say, industrial zoning. zoning, and it's likely the type of tenant that we'll have, it's very few deliveries also. So we're expecting the majority of the traffic to go off of Shady Shores.
Thank you.
There any other questions? Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the alternative compliance request and move rec staff to prepare the agreement for future, future approval by the city council.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Cast your vote.
Consider an act on the architectural standards and components of the site plans for development of approximately 13 acres located at the southwest corner of Current Parkway and I-35-E Service Road, consisting of 312 multifamily units, limited ground for retail, and related amenities. Applicants take, on behalf of the property owner, RCM Current Land LLC, case number SPC 23-001, Parkway Lost.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item relates back to the site plan that was approved with some contingencies on the Realty Capital Project Parkway District, and part of that approval was for the elevations to come back to the city council for final approval. And tonight, Michelle, we'll speak a little bit more to that, and you have those elevations in your pocket.
Yes, thank you. Just as a reminder, on August 3rd, 23, site plan was approved by city council, subject to certain conditions. The applicant has since revised the multifamily building elevations, they're including additional stucco for greater hierarchy, they're light, they lighten the balcony fascia, the window color change from dark to clay to light, or from dark to clay, and the lighter brick base was added. And this is just a reminder of the site plan that was approved and the building footprint configuration. I'll go now to the illustrative rendering, which shows labeling of the lighter balconies, the introduced stucco for greater material hierarchy, they added backlit feature, I should say, there is a, there is a note in your staff report that the signs are not included. These are for illustration, that's under a separate process. They added brick banding to articulate a lighter brick mix along the corner, and they introduced, again, on the both aspects of the building, additional stucco. You can see here, now, this is the illustration, what's really being approved. It would be the, the elevations, that'll be a part of the site plan, that will be a part of the building permit. So this, this image that you're seeing versus this image, which shows the, you know, the different elements, this is what's being approved. And if you'd like, I can page through, or I can, I'll just page, page down. This is the interior of the building in terms of internal to the site. This is more public-facing, internal, interior. The rear of the townhouses, the front facade, the townhouse style units, I should say multifamily. This is their clubhouse. Staff is recommending approval for your consideration, believing that it met the suggestions that we heard council saying, or to greater articulation of material, not so stark with, it's all brick, dark brick.
Can you go back to the picture?
This one?
Yes. So, I think, if you look in on.
The right?
Right over your arrows.
Okay.
Now, those two stories are brick.
Yes.
Okay, can you go back to the other picture? The first story is brick, did we?
Oh, so they're, so they're showing all three stories, they're not, they're, it doesn't, it's not consistent on one of the sides. Yeah. Can you go back?
And your applicant is here to speak to that, right? You've got a member of, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Probably left her there.
Good evening. My name is David Eguendeti with Realty Capital Management, and I live in Freeview, and I have a core of our money. So, good catch. This rendering is for illustration purposes only. Our design yielded those sort of issues that you saw, so what we are planning to build is what we saw in the live elevation, not what we have in this rendering.
So why would you give this rendering if it's not what you could build?
No, we're gonna build exactly what we put on the elevations. Because while doing the elevations, we noticed that not having a consistent line of brick would actually alter the feeling of the building itself, so we wanted to have consistency along those elevations.
I think the variation is better with two stories on the bottom, like, as, as depicted in this rendering. Like, it, it gives a little bit more interest, in my opinion, as opposed to the rendering, the drawings of your elevations, yeah. It's in the renderings, the first two stories, on, on one of the sides is brick, and then on the other side, it's just one stories.
Yep.
So that kind of variation, I think is much better-looking aesthetically.
We, it's, you know, in architecture, it's all down to.
I know, but I agree with Tina. If, if they drew, if you drew this rendering, it doesn't match the other renderings that you gave. I mean, this is pretty, right? This is much prettier than the other elevations, that you're drawing some of your elevations, but, but they don't match.
Yeah. Well, as I said, this is just for illustration purposes, because it's all depicting a corner of the entire development, and our understanding why developing the elevations was that it would be more pleasant to the eyes to actually see a mirror look and have just one story brick wrapping around. That was also the recommendation of the designer, so we kind of actually were excited about the end result, which yielded to this set of elevations, because it gives a consistent wrap of brick that actually enhances the reading of the materials itself. So this is just our personal design preference.
Sure. No, I get it. It is, it's subjective, but initially, the renderings that we were given were very different than what was presented, and now it seems like it's happened again.
Well, I, I do remember the original, very original rendering. This is somewhat the closest, the closest elevation and product that we can do. We can absolutely update this rendering and have it match the other one, the elevations that we presented for approval. I mean, it's, it's gonna be, not, not challenging to do it, but it's like, you know, it's kind of expensive for us with these kind of renderings, and so we wanted to convey the message with these options. But we are more than happy to walk you through additional renderings if that helps.
Is there any other questions or comments? Okay. I entertain a motion on this item.
I would move to approve the revised elevations as presented in attachment one, with the condition that the elevations be changed to match the renderings to the extent they're in conflict.
I'll second. Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote.
Okay, council comments and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public and or staff on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with Section 30.85.
May I make a motion with regard to one of the executive session items?
Sure.
Mayor, I'd move to authorize the city manager to proceed as discussed in closed session with the property on North Current Street.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote.
Mr. Burr?
Yes.
Mr. Garber?
Yes.
Mr. Holsord?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Pickens?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay. Purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public or staff on any issue or future events. Also, in accordance with Section 30.85, the code of ordinance, this time any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burr.
Mayor, I think, I had some discussions with Mr. Campbell earlier today about the thoroughfare plan specifically as it relates to Post Oak, and I'd like to maybe have a workshop on that with regard to that specific part of the plan before, if we are even considering revisiting the request by Mr. Reddick.
Mr. Garber?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Mr. Holsord?
Yes, sir, I'd like to welcome Miss Kelly back, Chris, thank you, we missed you.
Ms. Henderson?
Thank you.
Ms. Pickens?
Just thank y'all for your support through that. Maddie is doing great, for those that don't know, she had a massive stroke on the 23rd of August. She was not expected to survive, but she is sitting in her hospital bed, scrolling on her iPad. She passed her swallow study today, and so, God willing, she'll have her trachea removed tomorrow, and I'll be able to hear her voice. So, thank y'all for your love and support through this journey. I appreciate it more than I can ever tell you. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Just to give you a real quick update, on Saturday, there's gonna be an open house for pleats and fire. I believe there's gonna be entertainment there. I think the chief's gonna give out some goodies, and, and we should be able to see some action from the fire department. I think they're gonna put on some different things that they do in their daily activities. So, again, if you've got time, I think it's from, what, 10 until?
Till 2.
10 until 2, okay, so if you've got time, stop over and thank them for all they do for the city. With that, we're adjourned.